Oh, no, you can go over. That's okay. Yeah. Okay, good evening, board members. Looks like we have everybody. So we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. Call to order. And if you can all rise and give pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then at this point, I would request our Vice Mayor, Verdi Valiga, to go ahead and conduct an oath of office for Board Member Lisa Chen. Yeah. You can go ahead and turn on your mic, Mr. Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Hi, Lisa Chen.
You have to repeat after me.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Lisa Chen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Sorry for being late.
Congratulations, Board Member Chen. Thank you for being here. At this point, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. And I'll do a voice roll call. Board Member Balbuena. Board Member Briganzar.
Here.
Board Member Chen.
Present.
Board Member McMillan.
Here.
Board Member Riddell.
Present.
And Board Member Jun.
Present.
And Board Member Source is excused absence today. Yeah, okay. And at this point, before we jump into the community forum, since we have a new board member, it was requested that maybe everybody kind of introduce themselves again. And this, and just, just tell something about yourself. One minute each. We'll start with you at the end.
Good afternoon. My name is Philip. Formerly, I was a vice chair of the Beautification Commission prior to being on this board. Currently, I'm a branch and facility manager for a logistics company in the East Bay. I've been doing that for,
Just speak into the microphone.
I've been doing that for about five years now. And my background, education-wise, I have a degree in history with an emphasis on ancient history. So, that's me.
Thank you very much. And Board Member Briganzar.
Good evening. My name is Adam Briganzar. I am currently the chief technology officer of an intelligence, cyber intelligence company. My interest and excitement with being able to be on this board is I have a long history of in being in technology. I've actually been an engineer since I had the job of being an engineer since I was 13. And in many cases, I have actually implemented or developed both facial recognition, machine learning software, as well as many of the different kinds of hardware that the police use, just as a personal hobby. I've been a part of the hacking community for about 28 years. So, I hope to be able to bring that knowledge and experience and being able to make the right decisions for our community.
Thank you very much. Board Member McMillan.
Hi, I'm Michael McMillan. I've lived in Vallejo for 13 years. I was born in Vallejo Kaiser. I have a degree in economics and I work in finance.
Thank you very much. Board Member Chen.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lisa Chen. I grew up in the Bay Area, specifically in Venetia, since I was six years old. And I lived in Vallejo for the last 10 years. I went to San Francisco State and have a degree in civil engineering. I worked in the construction and engineering field for the last 10 years. And most recently, I am now working for an architectural engineering construction technology firm. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Riddell, go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Burke Riddell. I work full-time as a peer support specialist for mental health. And I study full-time as well for pursuing my bachelor's degree in social work.
Thank you very much. And Board Member Jun.
Hello, my name's Naomi Jun. I've worked in the public sector for the last six and a half years. I've worked in city attorney's office in my current capacity as a paralegal. I've been a resident with Vallejo for the last 27 years. So, I'm born and raised essentially here and grew up here. My reason for joining this board is I'd like to see what we can do with technology in order to fill gaps that we sorely need within the city. And I hope my background and also my interest in technology will help bring some new ideas to the table and we make some change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add also that we have three members that were actually appointed by district, and I just would like to point that out. So, Mr. Balbuena was appointed for District Three by Councilmember Luera Diaz. Mr. McMillan, I appointed you representing District One. And Ms. Riddell was appointed by Councilmember Ariola for District Six. And the other three board members, Briganzar, Chen, and Jun, were appointed at large by Mayor McConnell, Councilmember Dew and Councilmember Brown. So eventually, each district, as we move forward into, you know, appointing by district, that we will have a representation from each district. So, thank you again for, welcome to the Surveillance Advisory Board. I am your liaison to this board from the City Council. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for sharing. Really appreciate it. And thank you for being here tonight as well. At this point, we'll go ahead, next item on the agenda is the community forum. And I believe we have two in-person speakers. And if anybody who's joined in virtually, if they want to raise their hand while the in-house speakers are speaking, and we can, we can take their comments after the in-house speakers. So, the first speaker we have is Christina Ariola. You have three minutes. Three minutes.
Three minutes, yeah. I'm on this side of the board now.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. I'm here representing a constituent who runs and owns M&amp;M Liquor Store in South Vallejo on Sonoma Boulevard. And about a month or so ago, the owner, Mr. Hussain, contacted me about a camera aimed at his store. So, I went there to see for myself, knowing that his store already has a plethora of cameras around his store. And I noticed that there was a CCTV mounted on a light pole across the street clearly aimed at the front door of his store. When I asked the chief if the focus could be readjusted so that it pointed toward the more dangerous intersection of Sonoma Boulevard and Lemon Street, where they have constant sideshows, he said that he would look into it. So, in May, his response was protecting the safety needs and privacy rights of our residents is our top priority. As I mentioned before, sideshows are prevalent and persistent problem in the city of Vallejo. Lemon and Sonoma Boulevard is in fact a prevalent intersection where this illegal activity is conducted. The recently installed CCTV camera is designed to cover the intersection at Lemon Street and Sonoma Boulevard to alert officers of illegal sideshow activity. Our goal is to stop this dangerous activity. I contacted my captain to make sure the camera covers the entire intersection. So, what I want to ask from you, and he goes on, he keeps focusing on the intersection, but the camera is clearly pointed at his store. I've been there. So, if I can get some sort of confirmation of what the range of a camera, if it's pointing this way, how far out does that camera actually capture on an ongoing basis? As far as I know, the camera has not been readjusted. So, if we could get some information, I could get back to Mr. Hussain. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Philip Thomas.
Hello. I'm here representing myself. So, the question I have is you have a resolution here to introduce a policy? Where's the policy?
The policy is part of it.
No, there's no policy up there. What you have is a resolution and an agenda. Where's the policy? Somebody? Anybody? Where's the policy? Somebody say "had it"? Okay. So, I find it kind of strange that you're here to implement a policy, but the public doesn't even know what the policy is. Do you guys know what the policy is? Can anybody give me a breakdown on what the policy is?
Which item are you talking about, sir?
What are we here for? The resolution that you're proposing.
On the agenda, which agenda item?
Staff, this item is on the agenda.
Excuse me. There's only one agenda item on here that I can see, which is the Surveillance Advisory Board Special Meeting, right?
No, it's the action item, number 10.
Okay, well, my mistake. Where's the policy? Where's the policy?
The policy is in the packet.
It should be in the packet, yeah.
Okay, well, I've got the packet, whoever's speaking, and I don't have a copy of the policy. Where's the policy? Everybody's looking at me. No one's answering my question. Where is the policy? Where is it?
Policy is in page 10 in the packet.
There is no page 10 in the packet when the packet's four pages long. There's no page 10. Where's the policy?
Mr. Philip, the packet is in the back seat. There's a thicker document that's about 33 pages long. The policy is contained in there.
Where is the policy?
Okay, can I just give you? I...
I was wrong. Here's the policy.
Okay. Okay, sorry, let me get my bearings together here. Okay, we have one virtual speaker. And Madam Attorney is actually one of the board members, Andrea Source. But we want to make sure that she is addressing the board as a community member, right? Okay. So Andrea Source, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say hello. I'm watching on Zoom. I'm at home with COVID. And I had emailed some of my comments over to the staff, and I'm hoping that they can get included in the, in the meeting notes. I did have a few requests that I can state them as a community member for now. I was hoping that we look at the meeting frequency to try and have the board meet more often. I think, given that we're now looking at technologies, it is a good idea to have the board meet more often than once every other month. So I'd like to see it meet once a month. I'd also like to see a little more advance notice for getting the information on the packet is longer to the previous speaker. There is a packet that's separate from the agenda, but I would like to see that published a little bit more in advance so that the board can, can really do its job as it was chartered by City Council. And then I don't know if there's public comment on specific agenda items, but I had written some concerns about the gunshot detection technology, and I'll just leave it there. I don't know if there are, there are comments on those items or if I should speak to that now. I don't know if somebody can advise.
You may speak them, you may speak them as a member of the public when that item comes up later in the agenda.
Okay, I can do that then. I just, yeah, I'm happy to see the board running and I regret that I'm not able to make it tonight.
Okay. That, this concludes the community forum. We have no more, no additional speakers. Okay, we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar and approval of the agenda. And we're requesting by motion that you approve the agenda for tonight and approve the minutes from our regular meeting on April 21st, 2022. The minutes are included in your packet as well. So if you want to take a couple of minutes to review the minutes, or if I, I'll take the motion to approve the agenda and the minutes. Someone's going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, I just had a question. I didn't get this bigger packet. I was confused as well. Was I supposed to be presented with it or?
Yeah, the packet was included in the
I was not on the email list. We've had a back and forth where I was not included.
Okay. The email that I forwarded to you yesterday, when we're going back and forth, at the bottom of the email, there's a link for agenda in a packet. The packet takes you to the whole full packet. And you acknowledged that you received the email yesterday.
I didn't have time to review it. I just found out about this meeting two days ago. And I work full-time and go to school full-time, so I haven't had time to review it in advance of the meeting. If I could get a copy of it now, I can skim it.
One more packet. We only have four copies. Yeah, I don't Do you have a question? Do you have a second?
Please.
Okay. So we have, we have a first motion by Board Member Briganzar and seconded by Board Member Yun to go ahead and approve the agenda and the minutes?
Yes, I second it.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a voice call. Board Member Balbuena?
Approve.
Board Member Briganzar?
Approved.
Board Member McMillan?
Approve.
Board Member Chen?
Approve.
Board Member Riddell?
Approve.
Board Member Yun?
Approved.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a brief report of the Board Secretary. And I'll go ahead and give you a couple of items to report. You've been following the news, obviously, and there's definitely a leadership change in the city that we've, we've seen Mr. Mike Malone. He's the permanent city manager appointed for the next two years. And also, we have Gillian Hayes, who was promoted to the Assistant City Manager. And Terrence Davis is also the Second Assistant City Manager. And at this point, IT, who was reporting previously to Mr. Mike Malone, now I'm reporting to Mr. Davis, Assistant City Manager. We have a little bit of sad news from the Police Department. Our Captain Potts is actually leaving us, and we're sad about that. He's accepted a job in Las Vegas as a Chief of Police. So, well, congratulations to him, but definitely a big loss for the city of Vallejo. So I want to share that with the board as well. And we have some exciting new technology upgrades coming to the council chamber. We're working on some closed captioning technology, some translation equipment in this chamber, and that would be installed most like in the month of August, when the council and the commissions take a recess. And we also have a lot of broadband opportunities that we're going to, you're going to be seeing a press release very soon. The broadband is going to take off in the city for sure. There's very exciting stuff happening in that, that world. So keep an eye out for those press releases from the city. There'll be an RFP published, and the council recently adopted in May a broadband master plan and a digital equity strategy. So under that strategy and the new RFP, we're going to be improving the broadband situation in our city. And, you know, the technology is all ubiquitous, you know, the cameras and surveillance, everything kind of ties in together, so it will definitely improve the situation. That's pretty much all I have for the secretary's report. So at this point, I'll go ahead and ask City Attorney for her report.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And report of the council liaison?
Thank you, Mr. Navid Ashraf. Good afternoon or good evening again to the SAB Board, Surveillance Advisory Board. And I'm your council liaison. And I just wanted to, again, if any of you board members who are new, and if this is your first time to serve as a commissioner or a board member, the city is here to assist you. For example, you know, in accessing your agenda packet, which is posted on the website of thecityofvallejo.net. So if you need help with how to access that, please email Navid. He is your, he is the staff assigned to this commission. Because we want to make, I want to make sure that you are able to have access and able to read your board packet before the meeting. And if there's any issues with that, being able to, if, if you prefer to have a printed copy, please let Navid know ahead of time. So copies of the packet, which could be sometimes several hundred pages, can be printed because they need notice to be able to do that, and you will need to pick it up from City Hall. That is, if you're not able to access from your own personal computer. So again, if there's any issues, please copy me and, well, email Navid and copy me so I can also help assist in any way that I can. So, let's see, anything else? So the meeting request from, the request from Board Member Source will need to be discussed at the city level with the city manager requesting more frequent meetings. And we will let you know about that. Okay? So right now, the meeting is every two months, bimonthly?
Bimonthly.
Bimonthly.
On the third Thursday of the month.
On the third Thursday of the month. Okay?
May I, can I have a, can I question? Make a response to that? So I know in different commissions, in a previous commission that I was in, we voted to increase the amount of time that we met. So I would like to request, if we can take a vote tonight, on being able to be on a monthly basis instead of a bimonthly basis.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda. It's an action item, so it needs to be posted. We cannot just vote on it.
No. So for that, we, when we get to the future agenda items of the, of the agenda tonight, you can go ahead and request that item to be added for the meeting that we're going to have on the 29th.
Yeah, as an agenda item.
As an action item, and then we'll bring that back to you on the 29th. Okay?
Thank you.
So the next meeting is scheduled for, the, the board is supposed to meet bimonthly on the third Thursday of the month. However, there was a conflict with Architectural Heritage Commission. So this next meeting on the 29th is on a Wednesday. And on that day, we will decide which day, whether to move you permanently onto that Wednesday of the month. And at that point, at that point, we'll go ahead and entertain that other request.
Wouldn't that also be?
It'll be agendized.
Yeah, agendized and also availability of staff and
That is correct.
This room.
Correct.
For monthly meetings, because it's not just SAB Board that uses this facility. I mean, the council chambers for meetings. So Navid can do some research on that, and we'll make a recommendation as part of the agenda item request. Okay? So it has to be voted on by council, I mean, not council, by, by the board, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your report. Really appreciate it. Just one quick comment to Vice Mayor's, the comment that she made about the agendas. And I'll send an email out to the board as well. It's thecityofvallejo.net/agendas. You can always find the most current agendas, the packets, the presentations. We post everything at that location. It's posted in advance. This particular meeting is a special meeting, so we're definitely meeting the 24-hour requirement of posting. Normal meetings are 72 hours. So I apologize, Board Member Riddell, we had a little email issue, but we dissolved the email issue by yesterday. But again, you know, you're still getting used to the communication and the links and everything, so we'll make sure that the communication is a bit more clear in the future. And if you don't get anything, just call me and I'll make sure that the packet is given to you. Thank you.
I have just a, a quick question on regards to that. Is it a way in which the city of Vallejo website or some system can notify a person about a new agenda being posted, or if it's updated or changed, or anything like that? Is there something we can subscribe to?
Yeah. So we do have a constant contacts list. So go on to the city, there's a contact form, and add yourself to the constant contact list. Then any communication from the city will be sent out to you in a blast.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the election, which is our action item A, which is the selection of your chair and vice chair for the term April through March of 2023. So at this point, we, we can take nominations and just, we'll do just like last time. I'll go down the list. And who do you want to nominate? Board Member Balbuena?
I'd like to nominate myself for chair.
Briganzar?
I don't have any nomination to make. Is this, is this voting or just nominating?
This is, no, this is taking a nomination. Yeah, we can, if you don't have one, that's
I don't have a nomination to make.
Board Member McMillan?
No nomination.
Board Member Chen?
I'd like to nominate Naomi Yun for chair.
Board Member Riddell?
No nomination.
And Board Member Yun?
No nomination.
Okay. And do I, Madam Attorney, do I take a nomination? Yeah?
Do I renominate myself if someone? Okay, that's my
We'll start one at a time, so chair first.
We'll do the chair first. Okay. So at this point, we have a, two nominations, two names on the, on the, on the table here. Board Member Balbuena and Board Member Yun. So I will go ahead and do a voice call for Board Member Balbuena.
I'll vote for myself.
Okay. Board Member Briganzar, who are you voting for?
Balbuena.
Sorry, which one?
I am voting for Balbuena.
Balbuena, right. Okay, sorry, I'm sorry. Board Member McMillan?
Naomi Yun.
Board Member Chen?
Naomi Yun.
Board Member Riddell?
Philip Balbuena.
And Board Member Yun?
Naomi Yun.
It's a tie again, so we had the same situation as last month.
Right, we have to wait, do it next, next time.
So unfortunately, with the tie, we have to move this item again to the next month until we have a tying vote at the dice to break the tie. So we cannot continue with this item. We will continue with this item on June 29th. Okay? So apologies. So I will continue to run the, I was hoping to, to turn over the meeting to the, to the chair, but I'll continue to run the meeting, I'm sorry. Okay. We're moving on to the action item B, which is to review the policy for mobile audiovisual systems used in the PD patrol cars and make a recommendation to the Chief of Police and the City Council. So at this point, I request Chief Taw, Deputy Chief Taw, to go ahead and present that item. And Chief Shawnee Williams and Captain Potts are available to us on virtually as well. And I think we have some members of Axon people available as well. Oh, turn on the microphone, please. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, board members. My name is Jason Tom, Deputy Chief for the Vallejo Police Department. Today, I have with me as a representative from Axon, so in case that I don't have some of the technical questions that you may have, I have this person as a resource to be able to answer some of those technical Axon questions that are relating to this Mav program. So the purpose of my presentation today is to provide you folks with an overview of this Mav technology. So Mav stands for Mobile Audio Video. So I could refer to it as Mav. I might call it Axon In-Car. It's basically the same, so I might use those interchangeably. We're going to talk a little bit about the draft Mav policy. And then ultimately, we're looking for your input and your approval on this technology to deploy in our vehicles. I'm going to start with giving just a quick background on an in-car camera system that we had previously at Vallejo PD. The system was made by a company called Cobain, and it's no longer in use. Previously, it was deployed in our marked vehicles, so those are our patrol vehicles, the black and white patrol vehicles. It had one forward-facing camera, and it had a wireless microphone. So that microphone was attached to the officer's uniform, and it could be turned on and off remotely. The function, the old function of the Cobain system had some automatic activations. Those were when the vehicle was in either Code Two or Code Three operating mode. So I'll explain the different modes. Code One, on the light bar, activates the ambers to the rear. So those can be used for directional, just to alert drivers coming up to the area that there's something happening. So that's a Code One activation. Code Two is where the ambers are on, and the front red and blue lights are also on in the front of the light bar. A solid-facing red and blue light and flashing ambers. And Code Three is where all of those are on, but the red and blue lights are actually flashing. And there's a wig-wag function with the headlights, so you'll see the headlights kind of wig-wagging back and forth. This is to get vehicles' attention and people's attention when the, the car is operating in Code Three mode. And this is where the siren can also be activated. So in Code Three mode, you will see all of the lights on, blinking, the wig-wags from the headlights, as well as the siren. So the old, the old Cobain system activated on Code Two and Code Three. It activated on a certain speed activation. So previously, when the speed hit 100 miles an hour, it would turn on. And it activated when the vehicle was involved in a collision. So I'm going to talk about the new technology with Axon Fleet III. So it's very similar, but a couple of differences. So this system actually is the same vendor that we use for our body-worn cameras. It's by Axon. So we've had body-worn cameras for several years. They also are the same vendor that we use for our tasers, so same vendor. What this camera system has is it has a forward-facing camera that includes a mic, and it has an interior camera with a mic. So that interior camera points towards the backseat of the patrol vehicle. Additionally, this technology has Additionally, this technology has automatic license plate readers. We call it ALPR. And what this does is it can scan through the front of the camera, kind of like a cone pattern, and read license plates. It can also read license plates if you go in one direction and a car is going the opposite direction. It can also read license plates going the other way. What it reads is, it reads license plates that are entered into typically stolen vehicle system, or other systems such as CLETS. So for example, if you had a stolen vehicle from out of the area, it would be entered into this data system. If the license plate reader hits on it, then it will alert the officer in the car that it located a stolen vehicle. If it hits on a vehicle that's registered for some of the reasons, so for example, if there was a person wanted with a warrant, or some sort of flag for danger or weapons, then it will also alert the driver of that, if those license plates are entered into the system. The automatic activations are pretty much identical to the old Cobain system. So Code Two and Code Three will activate the system. Instead of 100 miles an hour, it's going to activate at 90 miles an hour, and then it will also activate if the car gets involved in a collision. So some of the benefits of this system include safety to our officers. So we talked about the ALPR function, and so when you have the ability to know that these cars are around you, or a car that you may be thinking about conducting a vehicle stop on, this is vital information for our officers to know ahead of time, to alert them of any potential dangers. It also is better evidence. So if you, if you can imagine, the body-worn cameras sometimes are worn low on the chest, high on the chest, low on the chest, sometimes towards the abdomen. A lot of times, our officers have these cameras on as they're driving to a call for service, or dealing with something that the camera is recording. However, it's just recording the steering wheel. So it really isn't recording anything of substance. This will augment that type of recording. So not only will we have recordings from the body-worn camera, but we'll have that forward-facing camera that can capture things on a higher visual horizon. In addition to that, we have the inside camera. So that camera is for, it could be for benefits of a detention or arrest, you know? So if, if for instance, somebody makes an allegation that they were mistreated, we could review that camera just to verify whether or not, you know, in fact happened or not. And then lastly, sometimes when officers are responding to, or going to emergency calls, they get into an accident. And this will allow us to better recreate what happened during that accident, figure out if there was any policies or training improvements that we need to make with our staff, and of course, it will help with litigation, you know, with the city. So I'm going to briefly talk about the Mav policy. So we are in discussion with our union currently. You, I believe you have a draft policy of where we are right now. The activations, the manual activations, are when enforcement or investigative stops or contacts are made. So that could be a pedestrian stop, bicyclist or a vehicle stop. Officers are directed to turn on their Mav when there are adversarial contacts, or they believe that there could be an adversarial event, or when the officer believes that the recording would be appropriate. So the officer could turn the Mav on based on that. The automatic activations I covered a little bit earlier, there's still Code Two, Code Three, automatic speed of 90 miles an hour and collision. There are times when the officer needs to turn off the recording. So in cases where we have an in custody, and the person wants to talk to their, either their attorney, their religious advisor, or physician, they're going to turn off those And of course, lastly, there are instances where officers are not required to activate this camera. So this could be an unplanned police or citizen contact, where we're giving directions, we're doing some sort of ticket sign-off, friendly contacts with citizens, or just casual conversations. We're not going to require officers to turn those on. Other agencies that either use Axon or Axon Fleet 3, which is the in-car camera, I just wanted to kind of bring to your attention. So Axon body-worn cameras are San Pablo, Vacaville, Sassoon, Antioch, Oakland PD, Napa, San Jose PD, and San Francisco, and there's a slew of other departments down south. With the in-car camera, Vacaville is in process, so is Salado County SO and San Pablo. We have a slew of other departments that are also in progress. Daly City, Folsom, Winters, Livingston, and Los Gatos. So with that, I'm going to conclude my presentation, and I'll be welcome questions if you guys have some.
Good evening, and thank you for coming to speak up. I do have a few questions. Perhaps I may have missed, so if you can give some clarification. As the system coordinator, it states the chief or an authorized designee would be responsible. Now, would that designee have the capabilities to delete information that they felt it was impertinent on a case? And would that designee be a union representative that would be able to make that designation on whether the information was important or not?
No. So we currently are designee is a, is a, not a union person, civilian person, that has access to the body-worn camera footage. So generally, what happens is when the camera footage doesn't auto-tag, so generally, when an officer is responding to a call for service, it will interlace with our computer-aided dispatch, and then so we will marry up those, those videos to the event number. If for some reason, the officer didn't attach to that call, some of those files need to be manually paired together, and so we have a technician that does that. And that same technician does some of the reviews that the chief would want, or some of the other reviews that might come up during the course of an internal complaint, or anything where we need to pull that video for court purposes. So that is not by anybody within the police union?
I did see another portion during the policy that said officers who reasonably believe that a Mav recording is likely to contain evidence of a potential claim against an officer. But what I didn't see was that there's no mandatory reporting to the chief. Could that be included in the policy?
Could you point me, could you point me to that section, just so I can?
I believe it was page 15, excuse me, I don't have the actual sheet, but it's page 15, 421 dot 7 dot 2, I believe is what it was.
Or is that under 421 dot 3?
Yeah, it would be under Mav recordings as evidence.
Okay, just to confirm, 421 point 7 point 2?
Correct. Let me, let me, I, there we go. An officers who reasonably believe that a Mav recording is likely to contain evidence relevant to a criminal offense, potential claim against the officer or against the Vallejo Police Department should indicate this in an appropriate report. Officers should ensure relevant recordings are preserved by attaching relevant case number citation or incident number. I guess my, my question is, would that policy include reporting any potential claim against an officer to the chief?
So like a misconduct complaint?
Correct. So I mean, I see here that it seems like he can just put it on his report, that there might be a relevant recording to any one of these. But if there's, if there's an incident that is a potential claim against an officer or an incident, I would indicate that being the same thing as a potential claim. Would it be mandatory to report that to the chief as well, that there's a recording?
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of clunky, because we have different policies under different sections of our manual. So that policy resides pretty much over in the Internal Affairs section. So let me just see if I can give you a couple of examples. So for example, if we have a use-of-force incident, there are certain things that supervisors are required to do, and a lot of those requirements encompass the body-worn camera, as well as now the Mav camera, when we have those in place. So to answer your question, it doesn't state right here, but if we were to have a deeper discussion on what would happen during a misconduct investigation, it would cover it in that section.
Okay, thank you. I do have one more question.
Okay.
It was stated that the Axon Fleet 3 integrates with the Flock Safety automated license plate reader. My understanding, there are different companies out there that actually preserve information on license plate readings, depending on an area. So for instance, if I had a CHP vehicle parked in a specific area, it would notate all the vehicles that had passed by that vehicle during the course of time, and it would lock that information somewhere in a database. So in the event that there was something occurring, they can go back and see what license plates most frequently enter that area. Is this integrated in this system? So essentially, is Flock Safety have a database where these license plates have been recorded, and are they stored that way?
Let me see if I understand your question, just, so with a license plate reader, you're asking whether or not this is actually gathering that data, or is it just analyzing it?
It's gathering and saving, so say that you're, say that you were in a, in a vehicle that have this equipped, and that you ran my license plate on Sonoma. Would that record, would that recording be stored somewhere? Is there a database that Flock has that shows that you marked my vehicle on Sonoma?
I think I'm going to ask Fausto, are you here? Fausto, available?
Yes, DCIM.
Okay. Would you be able to clarify this answer? I think the question is whether or not the ALPR on the Mav actually collects and stores the license plates that it runs across during the operation of the vehicle?
Yes. So any license plates that are picked up and read by the forward-facing camera in Fleet 3 will store a small picture of the license plate and upload it to our cloud platform, Axon Evidence. And in that cloud platform, the police department can configure a retention category, or I'm sorry, a retention period, on how many days, weeks, or years that data is kept stored, so that the police department can retroactively perform searches on plate reads, if they're on the lookout for a particular vehicle or suspect, to be able to search that database for that period of time, and locate information about where the whereabouts of the license plate in the vehicle.
So would, would you say that this technology then could track, in theory, my movement throughout the city, if there was 80 to 100 license plate readers? That it would be able to track me in my normal course of day throughout the year? You would be able to mark exactly where I was in any given specific time? Theoretically, is this technology able to do that?
Yes, it can.
It can? So you can run an investigation theoretically without like a warrantless investigation on an individual who may have not committed a crime, because you have this technology out there available that stores this information?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. It says on page 2, 421.4, the system remains on until it's turned off manually. If I was a bad actor, and I knew I was going to do something wrong, I would turn it off manually. What's the punishment for somebody turning it off manually, and then later finding out that they shouldn't have turned it off?
So if, if the Mav camera is turned off, and it should be on, correct? What is the punishment for that?
Correct.
So that would be, that would be obviously a policy violation. And so if it comes to the attention of the administration, typically, what would happen is an internal investigation would be conducted. We would look at the evidence, we'd end up speaking to probably everybody involved, including that officer, to see if there was some malfunction, or there was some other reasons why the camera that should have been functioning wasn't. And if we find that there is a policy violation that should not have occurred, then there's a possibility of discipline for that, for that officer. So that, that's how that process works. And that's currently in place, and we've had body-worn cameras for several years, and so I can say that on occasion, that does happen. Sometimes it's accidental, sometimes it's, it's, it's not. And so sometimes it's mechanical, and so we, we have to do an investigation and determine what happened, so we can figure out what the appropriate disposition is.
And also, let's see, this is page 6, the very top, it said the, the division commander can approve a request for deletion. I'd just like, there's, I'd just like no one to have the ability to delete. Is there a way to, just have to take that out?
Through the, well, there isn't a chair, I'm sorry. I used to say through the chair. So all of you are going to have to deliberate and discuss, and have time after the presentation, unless you're done. And then you can, you'll have to vote on that. So he, he can't agree to it, you guys would all have to agree, and then they would decide if they wanted to accept the change or not, and you would either recommend or not recommend based on that.
I guess another way to question toward that, if you don't mind me trying to paraphrase as well. Now, there'd be designated personal watch commander in this instance, that would be able to delete the information from the Vallejo Police Department side, but does Flock Safety still keep that on their end, on their records? Because I, I noticed, I just, I know Axon operates the Vallejo Smart City initiative, and Axon, the Axon network includes Flock Safety, which includes all of your technology. So I guess my question is, do they operate your technology for you, to where they have their own database as well, that is separate from Vallejo PD's? Like, does the video and audio, do they go into duplicate sections to where Flock Safety and the Vallejo Police Department both have independent recordings? Or is it once, once deleted, here is deleted in all places?
Well, let me answer this, Mr. McMillan's question first, because the deletion is, let me just give you a common example. The officer inadvertently left his camera on, he or she, and uses the bathroom. And so on some of those, they, if that does occur, I'm just giving you an example, if that does occur, and they want that footage deleted, then they, they go through the proper channels enumerated here in this policy. It's reviewed by the appropriate chain of command, and if, if it's appropriate, they would delete it. So that, that's generally what that section is for. Okay, so to answer your question, I think, I'm going to answer it to best of my ability, and maybe Fausto, you can either add to or correct me, if I'm not 100% correct. But Flock saves, and he's an Axon, so he's, he's not really Flock. So I believe Flock saves one month of, of leased license plates, and then it's retained in our system for a year.
Okay.
So my understanding is Flock's data goes away, and we retain data for one-year retention. But the expert for Flock is coming up on this next presentation, so.
Okay, that's right, that's right.
You might want to, because the ALPR in the, in the in-car camera system is really the recording, and then the retention is, I think, through Flock?
Correct, they're integrated together, okay. Or Axon is integrated with Flock's system.
Yeah, it's integrated.
Okay.
I have a question that is sort of similar to these two previous questions. Again, it's 42, 421.8D and 421.7, uh, 42. 42. 42, 421.8D and 421.7, which I think covers the two sections in which it's discussed about the ability to delete video recording. And my question is actually about, I noted that, it, it does say in here that an email can be sent, and I was curious to know if some sort of audit, or trail, or a record-keeping process of all the deletion requests is maintained, and then similarly, if there's any review of that audit-trail process that is done on a periodic basis. any review of that audit-trail process that is done on a periodic basis, in particular to potentially look for situations in which multiple officers perhaps all request the deletion of the same thing, and if they, if there's a note about the reason, and if that's consistent, or if there's any anomalies that could indicate that something other than perhaps, you know, a mistaken recording of, of personal privacy, or something like that, had occurred.
Right. I would say yes, and then I'm gonna defer to Fausto to give some more kind of technical details on the audit-trail, Fausto, for deletion of records?
Yeah, so, audit trails, even after a piece of evidence has been deleted, audit trails are preserved within our cloud platform, and will audit every single action taken with the video, from its time of creation on the video device, all the way through possibly deletions, and the actions, timestamps, and users who made changes, or made requests of the video are all audited as well.
And that also goes for views, right, Fausto?
Yes, anyone that opens the video, and even just, when you open the video page, it doesn't automatically play the video, it just shows a image of the very beginning, but even if they don't press the play button, even just opening the video file to attempt to play will be audited as well.
Okay, thank you. I had another, perhaps similarly technical question. I noted, and I apologize, I did not write down the particular section, but it's really more just a reference, that there's a section in the policy that notes that it is possible in certain situations, certain, certain emergency situations, in which an officer can use a separate approved recording device to take a picture of something from these recordings. And I was wondering, and I, and I say it's mostly for reference, because I think it highlights, that is, of course, possible to use a second piece of electronics to take a picture or recording of another piece of electronics. So, I was curious if there is any sort of technical watermark, or anything else that is visible or encoded into these recordings, so that if a capture was taken of something that was recorded by this, that was not done with correct intent, that it would be possible for perhaps internal affairs, or someone internally, to be able to go back and identify what device it was captured from, and perhaps identify how in which that leak occurred? That make sense?
Yeah, I don't believe there's a watermark. I can tell you why that section is there, so, in a hypothetical situation where there's some emergency occurrence, and that Mav system captures either a face, some clothing description that could be very relevant to searching for this individual, that's why that was able to be placed into the policy, to be able to snap an image of that, image of that person, or something very unique about them, to aid in safety consideration for other officers, or the apprehension value of whatever investigation that officer was conducting.
Right, right. Yeah, is it possible to ask Axon if that technology is either existing or planned for a device-based watermark to identify improper, I mean, even, it could even be perhaps a perp who got the ability to see the officer's camera and took a picture of it, right? Like, a lot of ways in which a picture could be taken of these recordings, and so, I'd just be curious if it's possible for us to implement something like that through Axon?
Fausto, did, did you hear the rest of that? Whether or not Axon has that functionality, or is that on the horizon for any type of watermarking? If there was a video taken of, a viewed video, is there any way to categorize that, or currently or in the future?
To my knowledge, no. I can't comment on anything that we may be working on, or is in the future, but at this time, we do not have anything in, in place to capture that type of information.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't wanna monopolize time, so if another board member wants to jump in, please do, but I do actually still have a few more questions. One question I have is, I noticed that the Flock Safety website has a transparency report for the Vallejo Police Department for how the ALPR devices are used. I was just curious, it seemed natural to assume, but just to be clear, is it correct that any license plates that are read through this camera system would follow along with the exact same transparency policy, or if there would be a different policy for license plates read through these cameras?
I only caught like half of what you're saying, so...
Oh, sorry, I'm probably back there.
I'm trying to read lips, but it's hard to...
Let me try again. Oh, hey, I can hear myself now. Okay, I noticed that FlockSafety.com has a transparency report for the Vallejo Police Department, and I was curious if license plates that are read through the Mav system would follow through with the same transparency process, would follow essentially through the same system, and have the same transparency policy, or if there would be a different policy for these license plates?
It would be the same. So, we have, just so you guys are aware, we have license plate readers already throughout the city, and so, these are going to be in-car cameras that have also the added function of a license plate reader. So, that's, that's why those reports are there currently, because those stationary readers are, are providing that type of outcomes, and so, this would augment what those are doing, in addition to what our in-car camera systems would be doing.
Okay.
Just to add something to it, the, that policy is policy number 426, and that is included in the package as well, the ALPRs.
Okay, yep. Oh, well, actually, this one was a little bit different. This was transparency.flocksafety.com/valeo-ca-pd, and it outlines other counties that can access it, what can and cannot be done with it, prohibited uses. I found it very insightful, and I just wanted to be, maybe just state publicly, that license plates read with this system would follow the same policy. Another question I had that I think is maybe, you know, maybe an obvious one, but I just don't know enough about police vehicles. I noticed that it is, it is possible, in 421.4, it mentions the ways in which the Mav can be activated, and I noticed that the Axon system stated that it is possible for the cameras to be automatically activated if a gun rack is opened, but that that wasn't mentioned on our, on our policy, and I was just curious if you could talk a little bit about why that's not mentioned?
Yeah, so there, on, on this technology, there are other automatic features that we did not choose to go with at the moment. So, the only automatic features that we are moving forward with are the ones that I had mentioned, the light bar, the collision, as well as the speed.
Do, do our vehicles have gun racks that would be compatible to be integrated with the system? Is that a thing that is possible to do?
It is possible, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is, in 421.8B, it references pre-recording, and says that it cannot, the device cannot be configured to record for more than 30 seconds, and I was curious to know if there is a configuration of pre-recording that is set, if it is zero, or if it is at 30 seconds, or if there's a policy, like, for instance, in the case of a collision, if there's a policy that states that there should be a pre-recording that is automatically applied?
So, the pre-recording is 30 seconds, and it's gonna be the same on the body worn camera, as it is on the Mav, and so, what that means is, is that if I were to turn the recording on, it goes back 30 seconds in the past. So, so it will capture 30 seconds' worth of the past, with no audio, but you will have video, and the Mav will do the same feature.
Okay.
So, if, for example, if unexpectedly the car got into a collision, it would back up 30 seconds into the past to capture video.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just have one quick follow-up question. If something is deleted, is it possible a month later to have it undeleted?
I think, Fausto, could you answer that question? My, my understanding is, when you delete something, it's deleted? Is that correct?
In our platform, when you mark a piece of evidence for deletion, it will go into a deletion queue, where it will sit for seven days before the file is permanently deleted. After that seven-day mark, there is no possibility to retrieve the evidence.
Is, just from my understanding, Fausto, is, is there ability to delete that before the seven days? Like, if somebody were to go into that area, or does it, is it required to stay seven days?
So, when a video is marked for deletion, it is not immediately deleted, it is just simply placed into a queue, and it will remain in that queue for seven days, and there is no possibility to adjust that timeframe, where in that seven-day period, an administrator with the proper permissions can go in and remove the video from the deletion queue, so it does not get deleted, but after seven days, it will be permanently deleted.
And that is a pretty standard method for the cloud-based type of software, anyway. We have Office 365, and that is pretty much the same for OneDrive and Office 365.
Hi, I have a couple questions. So, in regards to, I just want to understand the system and the components. So, you have the in-car dash that's facing the front area of the vehicle, then you also have the interior one that's facing the rear, and then you said there was an external mic that's situated on the officer. Is that also the Axon Body Cam, or is that a separate microphone that's tied into the Fleet 3?
So, that was the previous technology, the CO-BAND. So, the CO-BAND only had a camera in the front, it didn't have a microphone, and I'm not even sure how long ago, it was over 10 years ago, it had a external microphone that the officer would turn on. So, you would get video from the front of the car, but in order to get the conversations at the door, they had a microphone. So, now, with Axon and the body worn camera, we don't need that. So, we have a microphone and a camera on the officer, and then the Mav will have a microphone and a camera, forward-facing, as well as back-facing, microphone and a camera.
So, from inside the vehicle, we don't actually have any video or camera facing the driver, or the officer's capacity as well?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I have is regarding the automatic activation in regards to ALPLR. So, my understanding is you have it activated under Code 2 or Code 3, or any of the Axon Fleet 3 systems, and then also when it's activated in 100 miles, or 90 miles per hour, and during collision. So, during any time, the officer has to manually activate any ALPLR outside of those circumstances? Or is the system constantly running, but not capturing?
Yeah, so the ALPR is constantly running, when, when there's power to the device.
Okay, so it's constantly scanning when the vehicle is on, or turned on?
Correct. And then the recording part of the, the device records on the auto-triggers, or it can be manually turned on.
Okay. So, when a suspected vehicle that's stolen, or a license plates gets hit, the, it automatically alerts the officer in the vehicle that they flagged or tagged any of that information?
Yes.
Now, is that information within Flock Safety? Who are we sharing this information to? I know, I assume we're not a closed network, where it's just, or where it's just Vallejo PD, using that information. What other agencies or private entities also have that information, or is shared across those platforms? Do you know by...
So, my understanding is, the Flock information stays within the Flock platform. So, for example, if, if we had a neighboring agency in Benicia that had the Flock system, then all of that data would be shared. So, for example, if, if I were to look up a license plate, I might find that it turned up in Benicia, or it turned up in Oakland, or it turned up in other places. So, that Flock platform, if they're used by other law enforcement entities, would be able to share that information.
And that's automatic? We don't consent to, say, a homeowners association installing their own ALPLR, or a Flock camera. We don't have any way of either agreeing or consenting to sharing of that data?
Correct.
So, it's just automatic? If, you know, there's a PD out in Timbuktu that automatically has Flock, they just automatically get our data as well?
Yes, it just gathers the license plate data.
Okay.
Can I, can I say something regarding that?
Sure.
Okay. So, Flock is gonna be on next with the presentation for, from Captain Potts. However, HOAs do not have access to the police Flock system. They can give us access to their system, but they don't have access to ours.
Thank you.
To kind of add to that, as with a question, that Flock website with the Vallejo Transparency Portal does list a fairly large number, but a number of organizations with access on it. They are, roughly speaking, all, basically Bay Area counties. Is it, you know, it was my assumption, but maybe for clarity, is that an accurate list, or maybe we need to ask later when the Flock representative is on? Is that an accurate list of all of the other police departments that have access to our license plate data?
Yeah, I don't have that list in front of me. I mean, if you wanna list it off, I could...
Oh, it's too long to list, but I could hand it to you.
Yeah, if they're on the Flock system, they're gonna be able to share, law enforcement entities are gonna be able to share data across the Flock platform.
But if they're not listed here as entities with access, they would not have access, is that correct?
I'm just making an assumption, yeah.
Okay.
Then it would be no.
Any additional questions from the board members?
I don't know if this is for this item or the next item, but just to kind of address Ms. Areola's comment on the direction, or the, the, is that, is that for this item? I'm not sure if it's for this or the next item.
That's for the next item, I believe.
Okay, I'll just leave it.
That's a fixed camera. Board Member Chen, do you have a question? Your microphone is on. Can you just turn that off, please? Okay. Madam Attorney, do they discuss among themselves now, or...
Yeah, if someone wants to make a motion to adopt the resolution recommending the policy, or if you want to discuss any modifications to the policy first, or... But there is a resolution before you, so you need to take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Attorney, there is a public comment as well.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Yes. Thomas Phillip, please go ahead.
First, I'd like to say that I applied for this board, and while I was disappointed that I wasn't selected, I saw most of your interviews, so I was happy to see most of you guys had gotten selected, so it was fine with me. Concern I have, it seems like this policy was developed by someone else, and you're just being asked to approve it. But that's not your role. Your role is to help develop policy. So, if you're just gonna take a policy that someone else put together, rubber stamp it, and say, "Here you go, citizens of Vallejo, we're all in," I'm gonna be extremely disappointed. Your duty is to help develop policy. Please do it. Thank you very much.
There are no additional comments.
Oh, to clarify, your, your powers and duties are in your, are in the ordinance, and you are being asked to make recommendation only on this policy. You can suggest changes, but you don't develop policy. City Council develops the policy, you're just advising. Thank you.
Does anyone disagree with making a recommendation of adopting, or should we all sit and have a moment, step back and discuss things?
I can say I would suggest a recommended change to the policy to consider also activating the MAV when a gun rack is opened, based on the feedback I heard today.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you, can you speak up?
I said, I would recommend a change to the policy to also automatically activate the MAV cameras when a gun rack is opened. That is not currently in the policy.
I didn't understand the word in front of cameras, because I'm just not...
Oh, M-M-A-V, mobile audio video?
Oh, 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 okay, I was thinking of Mav, okay, thank you.
Mav, yeah.
Oh, well, you, you guys would need to take a vote, a motion, if you wanna make... if you want to make, recommend that change to the policy. Or if you want to talk to the chief, see what the chief says about that change.
Sure, yeah. If anyone from the police department has any thoughts about that recommendation, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, I can comment. We had pretty lively discussions on that. So there was a couple of items that came up with a gun rack. So at the beginning of the shift, at the end of the shift of the officers' first few minutes or last few minutes of their day, what they'll do is they will open the gun rack, and they will put the gun and secure the gun into the gun rack and close it. Assuming that they don't need to remove that gun at all during the shift, they'll do the exact same process when they go home for the day. So creating a video every single day multiplied by the number of officers, we thought it would be very clunky and cumbersome because when you're not attached to a call for service, these videos exist, but they don't get married to something. And so that would create a lot of videos every day, taking in, taking out the gun. Our logic was that if there was an event that signified that you had to remove your gun from the rack, that the body-worn camera would already be on. The Mav could be turned on manually or one of the auto-triggers would have already turned it on with like a Code 2 or a Code 3 activation or even a speed activation, depending on how quick the officer had to get there, without having to deal with all the other files that are just going to be floating around. So that was the thought process behind it. And so it's something you guys can kind of consider.
Can you talk a little bit about how many steps or how easy it is to activate the Mav in those scenarios like you're describing where it didn't self-activate? You're going to open the gun rack and therefore, you know, presumably go ahead and activate it yourself. What are the steps involved in activating the Mav?
I think people can do different things, but for me, if it were me and I'm in a situation where I need to do something hastily, I would just turn the light bar to 2 or 3, and just, it would pop on. You can go through the on-screen. You can do, there's a button that you can do manually. But if you're in a haste, for me, if I know that if I click it on a number 2 setting, everything's going to turn on. But you can do it different ways.
Right, and I think that's actually very helpful to just state that by turning the light bar on to 2, and then any action you take after that, the Mav is already activated. And is that a normal part of how you would respond to things? You turn the light bar on before?
I didn't catch any of that. I'm sorry.
What's going on there? Is it a normal part of how you would respond, anyway? If you were to unlock your gun rack, you would normally activate the light bar at a level 2 or higher?
Not necessarily. I was just answering your question because we don't have currently the Mav system. So there's no process by which there is a turn on or turn off. We don't have it functioning. So as officers start using the system, they're going to see what is more effective on how to make sure that those systems are turned on when they're supposed to be turned on and turned off when they're supposed to be turned off.
Okay, thank you.
So just to, sorry, just one clarified question. If we were to set a policy saying that every time that a gun rack needs to be opened or accessed, that it be a Level 2 or a Code 2, is that even a plausible option?
Let me see if I can understand your question. So you're saying that you want the gun rack, when the gun rack is activated, to be at least a 2 or 3 on the light bar? Or?
Well, what I'm suggesting is if we can't get it, if we're not going to implement a system where the Mav is activated anytime the gun rack is accessed, then is there a compromise where if an officer feels the need to access his gun rack and that specialized weapon, that it always have a Code 2 light? Therefore, the Mav is automatically activated?
I think if an officer needs to pull his weapon, his body-worn camera is already going to be activated. By policy, if there is a need for a long gun to come out, the body-worn camera is already going to be on. So I think to your point, it really all depends on if the event that they're pulling the gun out is even anywhere near the car. So it's, you would think it would be, but sometimes it's not. So sometimes you're going a distance to get to where you need to be, and you're nowhere near your car. So every situation is a little bit different. What I can say is that if we do activate the gun rack on automatic gun rack activation, then we're going to deal with recordings at least twice a day.
Sure. I think what we're all trying to clarify is, you know, if a gun rack is accessed in an instance where it's a call for service, that somewhere, somehow, something is recording. Or if we can't have it automated and have this Mav activated when the gun rack gets accessed, what are the other options? What audit trail do we have? And you answer that. Most likely, the body worn should be activated at that time.
Well, the body worn definitely should be activated. And if it seems like the Mav should be activated, so if the event is happening right there, then we're going to expect the officers to also activate the Mav. So that is in the policy.
Thank you.
I just thought of one question. You have unmarked vehicles. If the lights aren't on, so the camera wouldn't turn on. Is that correct, number 2?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Just to also.
Can I add to that? Currently, the unmarked vehicles do not have the Mav cameras.
Can I ask why?
The Mavs were purchased for the patrol vehicles. Some of the unmarked vehicles that are used for surveillance, if the cameras were there, they would be made obvious that they're police vehicles.
Detectives and undercover type of cars.
I do have one other question, not pertaining to the gun rack, but in regards to the activation of the Mav system. I don't know how often, in terms of like a per day, you end up detaining or arresting individuals. But is there any, is the body-worn camera or is this system, would that be activated while the officer takes the individual into custody? Like, does the city have an issue where, you know, they have a substantiated or like a plethora of incidents to where this could, if these were activated until they were put into custody, that this would eliminate some of those complaints?
So I just wanted to make sure I understand your question. So from the beginning to the end of an arrest, is the camera being recorded? Is that a question?
Correct. Would there be a possibility for that to occur? So from the beginning to end, until you take them into the precinct?
Yeah, we already do that, beginning to end. Yeah, beginning to end. So it's on the body-worn camera, beginning to end. It should be on the Mav, beginning to end.
Okay. Yes, okay.
I have two, I have one question and one comment. My first question is, is the cloud-based platform unlimited storage for the department?
I believe it is.
For the body-worn camera, we have unlimited storage.
Okay. And then, secondly, I have a recommendation to page 6 of the mobile audio video. The language in paragraph 1, where it indicates the deletion by submitting an email. I've determined that any recording of no evidentiary value is extremely vague. This should be rewritten to not excuse anything but personal instances such as using the restroom. I think that if an officer is enjoying his lunch or those instances may not have evidentiary value either. However, it should remain on file for investigation purposes. It should only indicate if an officer is using the restroom. Absolutely, that should not be part of the files. That is my recommendation. Thank you.
Oh, so what you guys should just discuss and make a motion, and if you're done asking questions, and if you want to adopt any of the proposed changes that any of you have made as part of, you know, recommend the policy with... Does that make sense? Okay.
So I just want to be clear. We have two recommendations, right? We have one recommendation to have the gun rack activated or to have that serviced a part of this policy. And then two, to change the language within section, I'm sorry, 421.8D. Do we want to make two separate motions to vote on each recommendation?
Just for a little bit of clarity, I think for the one for 421.8D, we'd also need to include 421.7, which has the exact same words. It's at the top of page 6. It's in two places.
I liked your suggestion. If you want to take a vote on each recommendation and read it into the record, like read it into the records so we can add it. And again, it's just a recommendation. They don't have to follow it, but we can change.
Do we have to come up with the exact language that we want added? Or do we just talk in generalities?
Well, it'd be best if you gave the exact language, what you want.
Let's go with the first, I think let's start with the easy one before we do the language one. I'd like to make a motion to vote on the recommendation of adding the... I'm sorry, I'm not very good at.
Gun rack.
The gun rack as part of the policy and also as part of the Fleet 3 purchase or as part of the plan.
Do we have a second on that?
Second?
Okay, I'll call the roll vote.
Wait, can you be more specific? Because which part of the policy was that?
So I think I can restate it. In policy, section 421.4, the recommendation would be to add... The exact section. I'm sorry, 421.4.1, under activation of the Mav. Presumably, in the section, in addition, the Mav will be activated for any of the following situations. Add a bullet point number 4. That would, or, yep. 4 that would include activation if the gun rack is opened.
I'm sorry, Chief, Deputy Chief, is there just one type of gun rack? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, for patrol vehicles, yeah, there's one.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go ahead and do the roll call?
Okay.
So we'll do a voice roll call on the first motion. Board Member Belbuena?
Aye.
Board Member Briganser?
Against.
Board Member McMillan?
Are we voting for the motion or for the?
The first motion, yes.
Aye.
Board Member Chen?
Neutral. Abstain.
And Board Member Redell?
4.
Board Member Yoon?
Against.
Motion passes. Sorry, Board Member Redell, was your vote no?
4. Yes, correct.
Okay. So, yeah, we have, yeah, we have five votes, one abstain, five votes and one abstention. I'm sorry, I'm not hearing anything. Okay. Okay, okay. My apologies. Sorry, this is a difficult listening.
Can you clarify the language we should be using? Some people are saying aye, some people are saying 4. Is there like a specific thing we should be saying?
Okay, so we're voting on the first motion to add the extra language, right? Okay, okay. Board Member Belbuena?
Yes.
Yes. Board Member Briganser?
No.
No. Board Member McMillan?
Yes.
Yes. Board Member Chen?
Abstain.
Abstain. Board Member Redell?
Yes.
And Board Member Yoon?
No.
No, okay. So we have 3 and 3 again, and one abstention. Three noes. Yeah. Three yeses and three nos and one abstention.
Wasn't it three yeses, two nos and one abstention? Sorry.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. The motion passed. Are we good? Okay. 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 Okay, now we can go ahead and clarify the second part of the motion. Do you want to use that language?
Do we want to discuss how that, yeah.
Could someone repeat the second recommendation?
The recommendation was to be more specific in deleting any recordings, such as only to allow to delete instances such as using the restroom or additional situations that would be personals. But making it indicate no evidentiary value is extremely vague because there could be pieces of information that could help with an investigation. Could I have the city attorney clarify what evidentiary value even means? Just so we understand that.
Well, evidentiary value, I'll defer to the chief.
So.
Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
Okay, so as it relates to an investigation, so I'll just use any kind of investigation as an example. If an officer is somewhere investigating something, whether he's or she is looking for evidence or they are looking to find witnesses to interview or they're interviewing subjects or victims, that would all be obvious evidentiary value that a body-worn camera would capture. Now, if they're doing something that doesn't relate to any type of crime or enforcement, so if they're, to your example, having lunch and they forget to turn their body-worn camera on and it rolls through 5 hours. on, and it, it rolls through five hours, or, I'm sorry, they don't have lunch for five hours, but half an hour worth of footage, then it rolls through half an hour worth of footage, which is not a big deal. There are some ancillary kind of outcomes that, that happen, though, when officers record too much, or everything out of their day, sometimes they run out of battery. And so our officers sometimes are, because of low staffing levels, have to mandate to hold over, so it's not uncommon that an officer will work 16-plus hours a day, and then so that battery life really has to kind of last, and so they're instructed to, to record when it's appropriate, but not record when it's not appropriate, because sometimes they run out of battery. The cars are going to be different, because they have a constant power source, and so that's not going to be an issue there, but there are issues with the body worn cameras as it relates to battery. We have seen throughout the course of the years that as the devices get older, the battery life gets worse, and so when it used to have a 10-hour charge, now it's more like an eight-hour charge, and so I got off on a little bit of a tangent, but, but basically, anything that doesn't have anything to do with a enforcement action, or anything to do with any type of investigation, is generally not considered evidentiary value.
Actually, I do, there's a section in the policy, my apologies, 421.7.2, Mav recordings as evidence, and it lists things that are evidence relevant to a criminal offense, potential claim against the officer, or against the Vallejo Police Department. So those things should be recorded and indicated in a report. So I think no evidentiary value means it doesn't constitute these things in 421.7.2, so I'm not sure it's as vague as you make it out.
I'd just like to say, this is the car video, so police shouldn't be going to the restroom in front of their car, so we can just put that they can't delete it, because this is car video, this isn't the body.
Well, is it going to be integrated? I thought it was integrated, or are we just talking about the car?
Yeah, we're just.
You can only be talking about the car. The car policy is the only policy that's in front of the board.
Okay, thanks.
So I'd like to file a motion to have, have it say that the video can never be deleted, because it has unlimited battery, basically from the car, and since it's a car, nothing personal should be there.
Additionally, additionally, there should be backup batteries to these body cameras, just like whenever I have a cellphone, if I'm traveling, especially, for example, in Europe, I have backup batteries, just in case. So if my phone, if the officer's phone is always charged, they should also make sure that their body cameras are always charged and have backup batteries. That's a recommendation.
But we're talking about the car, the automobile camera only, sorry.
So I, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, Mr. McMillan, that you want to change the retention policy on the Fleet 3 in-car video to not have a deletion retention?
Correct.
Is that even feasible?
Because everything gets uploaded to the Flock cloud, and then after 30 days, it's gone, right? If it's not marked as a incident. So it cannot be detained forever.
Could, could we perhaps, I'd like to make a recommendation, and I don't know the formal process, but I'd like the input from the two people who already made a recommendation in a similar area, that, that the city consider striking from 421.7 and 421.8 sections that, in the event of, of an accidental activation of the Mav, where the resulting recording is of no evidentiary value, the recording member may request that the recording be deleted by submitting an email request to the division commander. If appropriate, the division commander will approve and forward the request to the Mav system coordinator for deletion. I'm fairly certain that that language is identical in both sections, and the recommendation would be that that entire language be struck in both places.
I second.
Madam Attorney, are we clear on the motion, on the language? Are we clear on this language and the motion to take the vote on?
Yeah, well, can you point out where it is identically repeated?
Yep, if you go to page six, the very top is a continuation of 421.7, it's at the very beginning of the page, right underneath Mobile Auto Video and Autolics.
Right, I know that first.
And then also in section D, under 421.8, it would be everything in section D except for the first sentence being, recommended being struck, so leaving the first sentence only.
I'm sorry, I really cannot hear you, it's my fault.
421.8, section D, striking all of it except for the first sentence.
Okay.
That, that part after the first sentence, and the very top of that page, which is a continuation of 421.7, are, I believe, identical language.
Okay, so that's your motion.
Can I, just one clarifying question, I'm so sorry, is if we remove this language, and this comes up, and the policy is silent, is that at the discretion?
It, just, just to potentially assist with that question, it does state in 421.8D, which would be remaining in this policy if this recommendation were adopted, it does say, "Officers shall not erase, alter, modify, or tamper with Mav recordings," so perhaps, and a more pointed question, would that also cover any requests for deletion, or any other form of deletion of the video?
I'm actually not sure, because it says officers, so I don't know if that means that someone higher up couldn't delete it, so I don't know.
Could you repeat his question? He's a little muffled on me.
He is, okay, so if we got, if they recommended deletion from the policy, that, what, what occurs when there's an accidental recording, and how that, how that works? If they got rid of that and mandated that you never, that officers never delete anything, tamper, alter, delete, what would happen? And I said, I don't know, because I don't know if officers covers all the potential persons who might be able to delete, like, an officer might be able to go request from the superior who's, I mean, you're all officers, but I don't know how this policy, if there's...
Yeah, so I can answer it twice, or two different ways, so if you say you can never delete, then it's just never deleted. There are sections in there, we talked about, where you should not be recording, and so in the event that you should not be recording, the officers, if they know those conversations or recordings should not be happening, they should stop the device, but if it's not stopped, and it's never deleted, then it remains, and so there are instances where I can see that there needs to be some deletion. The courts could come back later and, and mandate certain things too, but I think just from a policy standpoint, if it says you don't delete, then you just don't delete. But there are instances where we probably should delete.
Yeah, just to be clear, it's my opinion that the motion that I recommended does not specifically state that things should not be deleted, it just removes language from the existing policy, so therefore, I don't think also, for the attorney's question, it neither currently, the policy neither currently nor in its amended form would have any statement about non-officers, or actually, the person, it says here specifically, the recording member, so we're actually just suggesting removal of language that refers to the recording member requesting a deletion, and not making any recommendations specifically that things can't be deleted.
Well, it says erase, so I don't know exactly, it says officers.
That's already there, that language is there, and we're not talking about touching it.
Right, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm confused then, I'm sorry.
Does, sounds like we have the motion, does anyone want to second it?
Are we good with the language, or do we need to discuss any further? Any clarification?
Well, you can make the motion, if you would like, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think I did make the motion, was that recorded?
Yes, that is.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, and I'll go ahead and do the voice roll. Board Member Belboina?
Yes.
Board Member Briganser?
Yes.
Board Member McMillan?
Yes.
Board Member Chen?
Yay.
Board Member Riddell?
Yes.
And Board Member Yun?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, this concludes the two items, the two motions on this item B, we'll move on to action item C.
Naveed?
Yes, go ahead.
They, they need to, they voted to make two recommendations for changes to the policy, but they need to vote on both the passing of the policy and the activation of the cameras as well. The deployment of the cameras themselves is a vote that needs to take place, and then the overall policy as, as amended, or as suggested for amendment, needs to be a vote, they just voted on the changes.
Yes, the.
So you have a, there's, there's a, there is a resolution that needs to be addressed on these two topics, so there are two resolutions.
The recommendation on the staff report is make a recommendation to the Chief of Police and City Council concerning the use and deployment of the Axon Fleet 3 in-car camera system, commonly referred to as Mav.
I understand, I'm, so Laura, do, do the members have the resolutions?
They do.
In front of them?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so, so the two resolutions need to be, to follow the recommendation here, requires two separate resolutions, one dealing with the deployment of the cameras, and the second dealing with the changes to the policy as suggested by the Chief of Police. You've voted that you want to add additional language, or take this language away on the policy itself, but the motion as to the rest of the policy needs to be made by passing the resolution, and you can change the resolution to say you recommend the policy as, and including the modifications that you have now voted on. Is that clear, or?
It's not stated on the specific agenda, though, that that's what we'd be voting on.
What's not stated on the specific agenda that's what you'd be voting on?
For approving use of the Mav system.
It actually is. Make a recommendation to the Chief of Police and the City Council concerning use and deployment. So that's why you have two resolutions in front of you, one on the use and, one on the deployment, and the other on the policy.
Just a, a point of clarification, what I have placed in front of me at the beginning of the meeting is two resolutions, yes, the first is a resolution regarding the adoption of the Mav policy, and the second is actually a resolution regarding Flock Safety Gunshot Auditory Detection System, which does not sound like the same thing of what you just said.
There's two resolutions on the first one, so it says therefore be resolved twice, that's what she's talking about, we have to vote twice on that.
Okay, thank you.
You can vote, you can vote once, just to pass that one resolution, but it's for the two actions, and the other resolution is for the other action that's before you this evening on the next agenda item.
Can I make a motion that we implement and adopt this resolution for, to activate the Mav policy and the Mav system, so that they can do implementation?
Seconded.
Just for clear, with, with the recommended changes.
I'm sorry, with recommended changes, my apologies.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you, Madam Attorney. Call the voice roll. Board Member Belboina?
Yes.
Board Member Briganser?
Yes.
Board Member McMillan?
No.
Board Member Chen?
Yes.
Board Member Riddell?
No.
Board Member Yun?
Yes.
The, the resolution, the, the vote passes with four yays and two nays. Okay, so this concludes this item, we will go ahead and move on to action item C, which is review the use of a Flock gunshot detection system as a beta test, and the policy thereof, and make a recommendation to the Chief of Police and the City Council, and I believe we have someone from Flock and, Chief Ta, are you still introducing this topic, or is it Jason Potts? Okay. I think, Captain Potts, are you able to present this staff report?
I am, I'll, I'm on, you know, I'm on my phone, but just really quickly, I'll give this up to the Flock folks, who are the experts, but just so you know, this is, it's called Raven, it's auditory detection that pairs with license plate readers and closed circuit television, to, you know, develop strong leads in shooting incidents. So, you know, research shows that solving violent crime improves police legitimacy, trust, and confidence, you know, especially when you have victim and offender overlap, you know, because today's victim is occasionally tomorrow's shooter, and so the system will build capacity, which leverages technology to prove police investigative effectiveness. So we want to be focused, balanced, and fair, and we also want to be effective just, and we want to reduce harms, and this system does that, and so I'll give it up to the Flock folks, who are the experts on this, again, this is auditory detection, this is gunshot detection that pairs with license plate readers and closed circuit television. So with that, go ahead, John, you got it.
Hi, this is Hector from the Flock, taking over for, for John until he's able to join. Good evening to the board, and thank you for letting us join. As I said, my name is Hector, I'm a community engagement manager with Flock Safety, based out of Los Angeles, California, and so we're really excited to be able to get in front of you, present our technology, and answer any questions that you all may have. That being said, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, if possible, may, is there somebody from staff that'll allow me to share my screen?
Yes, give me a second, please.
Thank you.
Yes, you should be able to go ahead and share your screen.
Thank you very much, given so now. Awesome. I wanted to start off by talking a little bit about Flock Safety, just so that everyone in the room is aware about, of our company and, and what we do, and our mission is to eliminate crime. We do so by creating technology that allows police to have actionable evidence.
Excuse me, Hector, we're seeing your email, we're not seeing your presentation.
I apologize about that. Is it showing now?
Yes, go ahead and put that in the presentation mode, please, there you go, perfect. Yeah, now we're good.
Thank you. My apologies for that. As I was saying, our mission is to eliminate crime. We were founded about five years ago in Atlanta, Georgia, when our CEO was a victim of a crime. It was going unsolved, and at that time, working with local law enforcement, they let him know that the, the best first clue would have been a license plate. At that time, there was nothing in the market that was available to a community such as his, so set out to build this technology, so that it was available to the community at a lower price point, but at the same time respecting his and his community's privacy. Since then, we have grown our presence into over 2,000 cities throughout the United States, we're in over 1,000 police agencies, and we're leading to 150 hotless hits on average, and helping reduce crime by about 60% over six months in some of the jurisdictions that we're in, and doing so more accurately, which is also extremely important. Again, this is what you get when you do have Flock cameras, which is what you have today in your community, wanted to set the tone and make sure that you all know, our cameras are capturing vehicle details and license plate, again, it's indiscriminate evidence from fixed locations, and it's really important to mention that it's not people, it's not facial recognition, and it's important for me, as somebody that's gotten a lot of tickets, it's also not traffic enforcement. That being said, I did mention that a big, a strong part of our ethos is protecting privacy, I know that it was meant, there were some questions earlier on retention, all data is stored at 30 days, and it's a hard delete after that point. What does this mean as far as privacy? It means that this gives enough time for investigators to follow up on any... It means that this gives enough time for investigators to follow up on any leads that may not come about right away, but it also protects your privacy so that you're not, it's not surveillance, it's not capturing your vehicle for extended periods of time. So something that's really hard, important to mention. And again, it's not facial recognition. There is a search audit with a reason that is required for every search, and we're not used for things such as immigration enforcement or any uses that are not in alignment with our ethical reasoning. There was some mention about the transparency portal. It's something that we're really proud of. And it is specifically Vallejo is one of the cities that has come on board and pioneered that transparency portal. This is something that's customizable and available to all the agencies that we work with, so that any searches that are being performed, those other agencies that they are sharing with, all of this information is available to you. And also really important, the policy for ALPR usage for your specific department in your community is available for you to take the review and for the rest of the community as well. Now, like I said, we've been around for a while. We've been creating technology to help law enforcement solve crime. But we have seen that, you know, there is several issues impacting the nation right now. One of them is that crime is up, right? There, crime, violent crime is up throughout the United States. And in addition to that, as was mentioned earlier, the law enforcement officers that we do have are stretched ever more thinly. So they're working longer hours. It's harder to staff them. And so that's why we're trying to create technology that will allow them to follow up on any leads that may come in the event of a crime. This is a summary of what I just mentioned. And in addition to that is that trust component, right? So making sure that we are transparent, right? So creating these solutions that help the community receive the evidence that they need, that the law enforcement receives the evidence that they need, but also creating the products such as the transparency portal, which are unique to Flock. Now, the reason that we're here today is to talk about the new product that we are collaborating with Vallejo PD to roll out, which is our Raven product, which is our audio detection. So what Raven does is that it triangulates audio in conjunction with the existing Falcon cameras, so that not only is it using the, what it is using, finding audibly, but it's triangulating that with the Falcon cameras that are existing. It's able to focus on gunshots, glass breaking, street racing, and collisions, for example. In addition to that, this system that your department is choosing in comparison to legacy systems is about 65% cheaper, right? So as I mentioned earlier, we really started off as a community-based organization, company, working with HOAs, working with the community. So our technology, one of our things that we do is really try to reduce that price component. So we've created this new technology, but again, we've kept the same ethics around it. Detecting specific audio events, nothing else. Gunshots at the moment, as I mentioned, glass breaking, street racing, and car crashes, which is something that also impacts communities such as Vallejo. Those features are actually going to be rolled out in the future. Right now, we're focusing on the gunshots. Really important to mention, though, you know, we're not detecting people's voices. The clips that are stored are for five seconds only. And the data is only collected when there's a triggering event, in this case a gunshot. The data is stored, just like our ALPR data, for 30 days, enough time for investigators to take action if needed, or collect some leads. And the data is owned by the city, right? So what's important here is that we're storing it, we're keeping it in AWS cog that is owned by, that is managed by us. But the data is owned by the city, so we'll never access it or sell that data. I think it's really important at this point to kind of show you a little bit of behind the scenes of what this would look like in action. So I'm going to go ahead and walk you through what a Raven event would look like at one of your Vallejo dispatch centers. In the event that a gunshot is detected by one of our devices, the dispatch center would be alerted. They would then be able to search cameras that are nearby to make sure to triangulate the alert that they received. In this case, there's two cameras nearby this event that will receive the alert. We would now help the dispatcher by narrowing down the timeframe of the search to ensure that they're quickly able to find any images that are associated. Just as I mentioned before, with our ALPR devices, in line with the policy that the Vallejo PD has as well, a valid search reason is necessary for them to now go ahead and perform an ALPR search in conjunction with that gunshot detection. At this point, they'll receive, you know, some leads in the forms of ALPR images. In this case, let's, they now have 50 images to work from. At the same time, and this is hypothetical, they may be receiving some calls about this event through the dispatch center. At that point, we may have received an alert notifying them that it's an SUV that is, that was involved in this incident, and perhaps that it was white. We've now narrowed it down to, or they may, in this scenario, have received a call with just a partial plate, and now we've narrowed it down to one image or one potential vehicle. At this point, again, following the ALPR policies already in place and helping solve crime in Vallejo, they can add this information to a custom hot list, enter it successfully. If the vehicle is detected again in Vallejo, now we'll have an alert to follow up. But really, an important thing here to note is that this is helping the dispatch centers and your investigators start getting some leads that otherwise may not be associated to a vehicle, a concrete way to follow up on those leads. I want to go ahead and go back to our presentation and talk a little bit about how this is different from other technology that you may have researched or have heard about in other cities. Again, really important component with Flock is that we are pairing two different types of technology that we've seen work well to solve crime. And that's the Falcon, which is the ALPR cameras that you already have in your community, plus the Raven's gunshot detection. Humans cannot edit the results. They, the results that you get, that image that you saw earlier, that is not editable. And then, per your policy and per our device, there's two, two humans need to verify before taking any kind of action, right? So again, investigative tool in that sense. Want to kind of summarize again, what is the technology? It detects and alerts police to specific audio events, again, not voice activated, enables law enforcement to respond quickly to potentially serious situations, right? The epidemic of gun violence in this case. And again, stores very short clips of just this particular event and pairs those with a license plate, which has proven to help start an investigation. Again, what is this not, which is also important to talk about? It's not detecting people's voices. It's not tied to any personal identifying information, and it's not storing long audio clips. This is a little, kind of a summary of what the product is. I really want to turn it up to, over to you all, answer any questions that you have and start the conversation that way. I know Captain Potts may have some answers to specific policy areas that are specific to Vallejo. So happy to now hear from the board. And again, thank you all for participating in this and giving back to the community in this way.
I'll start with a question. Do you have any data on the rate of false positives for gunshots, car crashes, et cetera?
I definitely can provide that data to the board if needed. I don't have the exact numbers on the false positives.
I don't know if we need to make a resolution or recommendation or anything, but I would be interested in that data, and I would also be interested in hearing from the city about how the beta testing program and process will look to understand the false positive rate and its effectiveness, and including in that understanding if there will be some sort of statistical model or anything that's used, and what the approach would be. And I'll just add as an anecdote, besides thinking that that's relevant to making sure that this is effective, in the various cities that I've lived in, I've noticed that Vallejo in particular has historically had a lot of fireworks noises and other things. And it's pretty common for citizens and residents to say, play the game. Was that a firework or a gunshot? So if we're going to be asking our technology to do what we as humans do a lot, I definitely think it'd be good to understand more about it.
Definitely. And I do want to chime in there. I don't have the specific numbers, but we have beta tested this product throughout the country to the level where we've actually beta tested blank shots versus real shots. The machine learning is powerful enough to detect the difference between a real gunshot and a blank. I've asked my team to provide me that data. I don't want to provide you any rear-end news information, but I do want to say it is very precise.
So, but, so you beta tested in other cities, but you're not allowed, or you're not relinquishing the result of that? Where it's just, there's no specific data other than you stating that it's efficient?
Well, I can definitely get you that information as soon as possible.
Now, a question. Good evening, Chief Williams. So I noticed that they flash the plates when there's, when these are activated. Would officers then go to those vehicles that were flashed and conduct stop and searches? What's the policy behind that? Or just recording the data behind vehicles that were close by when that noise incident occurred?
So, so you're asking a fourth amendment. You're talking search and seizure. So this information, first of all, will get us to the scene, and it's a, it's a beta test. So Flock Safety is gracious enough to offer Vallejo the opportunity to beta test this information. So it wouldn't be actionable until it's purchased. However, in, if ShoutSpotter, which is a different company, has been deployed in Richmond and other cities, it would only get us to the location. So for example, if we had, we had 269 shootings in 2020, if we had this technology and we could respond faster to those areas, and in fact, a shooting occurred and there's evidence of a shooting or a victim, that victim could get treatment faster, and that is the goal, to save lives. And then we would collect the evidence. But the system would allow us to start, if we have actionable information from witnesses that perhaps described a vehicle, it would give us information to begin an investigation. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to stop that car until we can confirm that we have probable cause to believe that that car is involved in a crime. And that's a process. And I could tell you, I headed up investigations in the city of San Jose for four years, major crimes. All of our officers are taught that they have to have probable cause, and that is a process of an investigation. But this system will allow us to do that, to start that process a lot sooner.
So I see that we're offered it on a beta basis, but I also notice that Flock Safety is providing us four out of the five surveillance features that we currently use with Axon partnering with them for a fifth. Have they offered beta on all the other equipment that we've used in the past as well? Could we just make the assumption that if we approve this for beta, that it's going to go for purchase after? Is that how historically it's been with the other items surveillance-wise?
No, the, the automatic license plate readers, we did not beta test that. It had been tested throughout the United States. And maybe, Hector, you can tell us how long. We recently purchased the automatic license plate readers as part of Operation Peace. Our first 10 cameras were purchased in the fall of 2020. But I believe Flock Safety was around a lot longer than that. Hector?
Yeah, we've had a really, or had Falcon cameras in Vallejo for about two years now. And our company, and now ALPR has been around for over a dozen years at this point widely. Our company is one of the first that's reduced that price and made it available, you know, to private sector as well.
Now, this is for the chief. I do have a question, because I noticed that on the paperwork on our agenda this evening, that most of the addresses were basically limited to about a half dozen. Have we done, maybe we can talk, or maybe you can speak to what other items that the police department has done to help mitigate crime in those specific areas? And I ask this because it appears we're going to be ordering on beta testing on these dozens of these, but the addresses listed on our paperwork were limited to less than a dozen, which seems like that's more of a narrow scope where the majority of crime is occurring.
So I could speak generally with regard to gun violence. We looked at three years' worth of data on where the, many of our gun crimes are occurring frequently. And we're using a data-based, evidence-based approach to place the cameras strategically in and around those areas. They're also going to be paired with the actual cameras. So Hector, if you want to speak to the technical aspect of how we're placing the cameras?
Yeah, so the devices are paired to existing cameras, again, so that we can make sure that we can provide that secondary evidence, which is the license plate in this type of event. The devices themselves, it really ranges in quantity depending on how the built environment is, right? So what type of structures, you know, how tall buildings are, how dense they are, that all impacts that. But we have coordinated with Vallejo to make sure that it is in an area where there's existing Falcons and there's an existing need as far as gun violence.
Not to take everyone's time, I do have two further questions. Now, I saw during your presentation that the information was limited to just the city, the city owning the property, or I guess the property rights to that information. But on the Vallejo PD transparency portal, there's a list that shows external organizations with access, and this list is substantial. So I guess we just need some clarification. Do these external organizations have access to our city's information? Or does our city have to give those locations permission? How does that work within the system?
Yeah, it's actually, the transparency portal, as you're seeing it today, since there's no Raven activated, is only agencies that are sharing on a one-to-one with Vallejo PD ALPR searches, right? So that is why you see those agencies there. For the gunshot detection, that is not something that is shared outside of your jurisdiction. And again, if that were something that is available in the future, the Vallejo PD would be the agency that would initiate that, right? Just the same way, actually, as the ALPR. The administrators in Vallejo have shared ALPR data with agencies in, actually, pretty much only Northern California. And that's because there's cross-jurisdictional needs as far as investigations, right? So that is all up to the city, and it actually, right now, is not something that's available for Raven specifically.
And one last question. You know, I was, I deal in the business where we always ask, you know, what's the worst-case scenario? Producing something and costs and such. Trying to do independent research on this, I was mostly seeing negative feedback, you know, cities, including cities like Chicago and other cities as well. What do you do to mitigate some of the concerns that people have had that this technology targets minority and lower-income locations?
I think that's an excellent question. And the difference with us is that we're pairing it with another piece of evidence, right? So this is an investigative tool, so the investigators at your department can follow up on those leads. It's not meant to, you know, change any policies that are outside of what your department is choosing. And the other part is making sure that we're transparent in searches, requiring a search, having the transparency portal, having these type of conversations. That is something that's really important to us, and that's why we want to be part of this process and continue to create the products ethically.
When we do want to invade a, and they decide to move forward with the purchase, if they were to move to a beta phase, does the city reimburse for that time in the beta phase? Or is there credits given to the city for allowing the technology to be used within the city? For get, for the purpose of collecting data?
The, the beta test is free to the city at this point.
So there's no reimbursement to you guys if they decide to go ahead and use it and then purchase it long-term?
At the time that the beta is complete, the city has the option to sign a formal contract and then purchase the devices. But at this point, the beta is a free test.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I know, I noticed on the website that the Raven system detects other types of sounds besides gunshots, screeching tires when a glass breaks. I did notice earlier- earlier, Hector, that it looked like that those had a note of being future. So is it safe to assume first that that is not included in the current Raven system, anything besides gunshots?
That's correct. Right now, gunshots is what our machine learning has been taught to detect to the level that we're comfortable using it. Again, there is a human verification portion as part of the Vallejo PD department of two people verifying that gunshot as well. I do want to point that out, which is an important piece, you know, as like a safeguard. The other portions is something that we are developing and hope to have out by the end of the year.
Okay. And then a question more for the city. If during the beta test, additional types of detection became available, like we're discussing beyond gunshots, would they be included in the beta or not be included in the beta? I ask just because what we see to be reviewing specifically refers only to gunshot sounds.
At this point in time, it's just the gunshot detections that we will be beta testing.
Okay, thank you. Another question I have is, has any assessment been done for where the locations of the current ALPR cameras are, if they have appropriate density to be able to provide adequate triangulation to detect gunshots, or if additional ALPR cameras or devices would need to be installed for the Ravens and beta tests to be considered effective enough?
I can answer that, Chief, if you'd like. There's no need for additional Falcons. We've paired the devices that were used. It's a specific type of square mileage with existing Falcons. So no new costs incurred or no additional Falcons that were needed in that situation.
Okay, thank you. Another question I had is related to how this information may be sent to dispatcher 911 operators. And I was curious to know if some part of the dispatch would be able to quickly correlate data from the location of a gunshot sound with data of location from incoming 911 calls and associate those two together, or if that's something that has to be done after the fact? Like, how are those two systems able to communicate, if at all?
So our system is providing the alert with the GEO code, right? So it's saying, these are the devices that picked up the gunshots, and then this is a Falcon that is nearby, right? So as you saw in that demonstration. As far as calls, I don't want to speak out of turn as to the CAD system or the system that your dispatchers use. I'm assuming they also have a system that is allowing to them to see where the calls are coming from, and at that point, make the assessment as to whether they're related to this incident.
Is that assessment done manually by a human searching through both systems, or are those systems integrated or communicating in any way?
The CAD event or the 911 call would be done manually, and that comes in through the dispatcher. And Hector, you can talk about the other.
Yeah, so hypothetically, as in the example that I talked about, they may be receiving calls at that point through their CAD system, which they can then correlate to an address potentially of where the call is coming from, what is being reported to them. And then, you know, looking at our system, see what information they're getting in real time as well. Latency is 20 to 30 seconds. So at that point, they're getting that real-time data of an event that may be occurring. And then also, there's that geographic component that they can verify.
Okay, thank you. Another question I had is, it appeared on the Flock website that the Raven system is able to activate camera recordings. And it wasn't clear to me if that just meant ALPR or also CCTV or other general recordings. So I was wanting to know, with this beta test, it does sound obviously like it would be integrated with the Falcon and activating ALPR, because you demonstrated that. But are there other types of camera recording systems that would also be automatically activated during the beta test if the Raven system detected a gunshot?
No, there would not be. So this is strictly Falcon cameras, which are license plate reading cameras and the gunshot detection device, which is the Raven. There's no additional cameras that are being fed into there. I think what you may have seen on our website is a different product, which is not anything that's being discussed in Vallejo tonight.
Still have a few more, if nobody wants to cut me off, and jump in. What about, I'm curious to know how the gunshot detection would be integrated with case reports or considered as evidence? Is that something that would be included as a part of a case? Or in the beta test, is this just something that would be used for general information purposes and not considered something that would be included as evidence or in a case report?
So this would just be strictly a beta test until we verify the information. If we were to adopt these cameras and it became part of our practice, it would be part of the policy. So upon verification that we did have an actual shooting, it would have to be documented in a police report.
Yeah, okay. But that's not applicable currently in the beta program?
No.
Okay. Another question I had, perhaps more for the city, is would a gunshot sound detection from a Raven device plus the location of that gunshot, plus a license plate read from an ALPR system near that location enough to be considered a probable cause for a potential crime?
No. We would have to verify that the car is actually associated to that shooting in order to create probable cause. And that would require verification, witness identification. I mean, it's a whole process of investigations that we would have to go through in order to verify this information.
Okay, thank you. My last question is a technical question related to the Flock system. You'd mentioned that the data is owned by the city or by the police department, and that Flock doesn't have access. And I'm curious to know, is there an encryption or other system that prevents Flock from being able to see that data? And if so, is there a way that we can get an understanding of how that system works, where the encryption keys are stored, or how that's handled to kind of understand that Flock doesn't have access to that data? And I assume that that would apply to both technologies provided by Flock.
Yeah, so the data stored in AWS Cloud, not owned by us, somebody at the department needs to access the data directly. There are a handful, maybe three people within Flock that have keys, as you stated. That is needed, just in case of, you know, an emergency with permission of the department, right? That would be the only case that they would access, and it's a very limited number of people.
Okay. But so there is technically people who would have keys that are employees of Flock, and it's a matter of policy that dictates whether or not they access the data with permission from the city?
Yes, it is our policy. We will only access the data in those three people if asked by the city for some type of event that is out of control, where there's no access for some reason.
Okay. I have a question. You said that this goes to dispatch, is that correct? The alerts?
That's correct.
So this would only increase the burden on our dispatch, right? Under no circumstances would dispatch have a less load?
Yeah, I would say that if they received an activation, yes, they would get a notification of that alert, of that potential shooting.
Chief, I can step in and add a little bit more if you like. So yeah, the dispatch have multiple monitors. They're used to monitoring multiple streams of data coming at them. This will just be another stream of data, another clue sort of coming at them. So if that alert pops up, and then you have a 911 call coming in from this area, they can put two and two together. That's the kind of technology we're talking about.
Okay. And I see that these are deployed in hotspot areas of the city. We're known as the most diverse city in the country. What ethnic makeup are these devices deployed in? Do you have like the percentages? Because I know as a city, we're almost 25, 25, 25, 25. What's the, if the police chief, do you have those numbers?
No, I don't have those numbers in front of me. What we're looking at are frequent locations where we've had shootings, and I think you may have a sheet there that looks at the frequent locations, and that's how the cameras are deployed.
A quick question about that. I did see the maps that show the frequent locations of different types of activity, but it doesn't indicate on there either generally or specifically where either the ALPRs or the Raven systems would be deployed. Is there some information that we could talk about today, whether that's sort of like by district or by general area, or anything even more specific about where the beta test would occur within the city?
Hector, do you, I don't know if you have that information available in front of you.
Outside of the addresses that are in the package, I don't.
Jason, I don't know if you have.
I do, I do, Chief. Yeah, they're generally in the 201 main Marina Vista apartments in South Vallejo at this point. So it's a downtown corridor. We know our hotspots are in the Sino Boulevard, west of Sino Boulevard. So yeah, and again, we know that crime is highly concentrated, violent crime is. And so that's where we've deployed them initially, where we want to deploy them anyway.
I just, I wanted to ask about the actual beta process. So how long will this process be going on? How long will we be testing? Who's receiving the reports for the data of this information? And will this come back to SAB with a report of showing us the progress of this beta test?
Captain Potts, since the beta tests do vary, in your case, is it a year, I believe?
I think that's right, Hector. I don't think we've established that, but I think it's a year at this point.
Yeah, so typically, it's up to a year unless it's less time. And then for the second portion, I'll turn that back to you all as far as reporting.
And I can add to that as well. You've all requested some impact of technology, and we will be bringing that information on to you periodically. So as the beta test progresses, we have some data, and the subsequent meetings will bring that data out to you as informational item.
And Navid, I can just talk about the ALPR. So we've been collecting data since November 7th, and I've kind of grabbed all the data. And so we've made 65 arrests and 62 recoveries of stolen vehicles since November 7th of last year. So we've been doing a really good job with our crime analysts of gathering that data and making sure that we're kind of looking at the outputs. And then at some point, we're also going to measure those outcomes as well, and that's crime reduction and the perception of safety and harm reduction in those hotspots.
And Jason, can you also talk about the number of arrests that, I don't know if you have that data in front of you, but we are capturing that on a weekly basis?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I don't know if I cut off, but 65 arrests and 62 stolen vehicle recoveries since November 7th of last year. And so again, those are outputs. And so then we look at outcomes, and those are crime reduction, our perception of crime and harm reduction in those areas, in those hotspots. So this has really been pretty effective for us.
And I believe this particular data that Captain Potts is talking about is available on the VallejoPD.net.
Yeah, just a quick question about that. I was looking at that today, and it looks like the number of hits and just generally the numbers across the ALPR data went up pretty noticeably, report by report. Just a question of, is that because of a rollout process? Or is there something that y'all could state as to why we went from like a few dozen to as much as a few hundred more recently?
I think it's sheer numbers. I think it's our officers becoming more used to the system and figuring out the effectiveness of it. So our officers sit downstream, depending on, you know, the call volume and their activity, they're just getting more and more competent in using the system. So that's a part of it. And then we're just, the sheer number of the deployments of these cameras in those hotspots as well is playing a role as well.
And I'd just like to add to what Captain Potts said. I believe we deployed more cameras in December. Is that right, Jason? And we still have approximately 30 more to deploy.
That's correct, Chief. Yeah, we have 30 that we're actually going to be deploying here. We have the areas designated, and so we're eager to get those going.
One final question I have that's not related to anything that we've been talking about before is I noticed on the agenda item for tonight, 10C, it says, review the use of a Flock gunshot detection system as a beta test and the policy thereof. And I also noticed on the recommendation before, it says, deployment of the Flock Safety Gunshot Auditory Detection System, et cetera, et cetera, detection technology policy as submitted by the chief of police. I don't have a copy of a policy that discusses a gunshot detection system, so I was just curious if there was some information about that policy available.
And let me just answer that. So that policy is in draft format. It's currently being reviewed. And once the draft is completely reviewed, we can submit that to the Surveillance Advisory Board.
I don't know if this is maybe a question for the attorney or anyone else, but does that mean that, is it reasonable to have a conversation about this resolution since it recommends that we adopt a policy we're not able to review yet?
No, we would amend it so that we would strike that.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a public comment as well, virtually. Do you have a question, Courtroom Chairman?
Hector, I just have a question. Is your system able to distinguish a gunshot versus fireworks?
Yes, it is. Again, this is a beta test. We'll have more data available. But I can tell you, the accuracy is great enough that it can actually detect blanks, so shooting a blank from a gun versus a real bullet.
If the board is okay, I can go ahead and take that public comment now? Okay, all right. Andrea Source, go ahead. Would you public comment?
Yeah, thank you. So I know the group had less than two days to review this, and based on what we've heard and what we have so far, I would recommend opposing it or waiting until we have a policy discussing later and then taking a vote later. At the very least, I think there needs to be the release and discussion of the policy. As others have mentioned, I think these technologies have led to overpolicing and problems in other cities that need to be investigated. The ACLU has not identified privacy issues with gunshot detection technology, but they unequivocally oppose it based on other civil liberties issues and concerns about the efficacy. One of their publications says, and I quote, "A number of cities have stopped using the technology after deciding that ShotSpotter creates too many false positives and false negatives, so reporting gunshots where there were none or missing gunshots that did take place." The MacArthur's Justice Center report found that in Chicago, initial police responses to 88.7% of ShotSpotter alerts found no incidents involving a gun. And the ShotSpotter also led to the killing of a 13-year-old boy in Chicago due to a false positive. So I know that this isn't the ShotSpotter technology, but this is the same type of technology, and it deserves more review. The Chicago Inspector General issued a report basically questioning the effectiveness and specifically cost-effectiveness of the technology. They said, and I quote, "OIG concludes that CPD's Chicago Police responses to ShotSpotter alerts rarely produce evidence of a gun-related crime, rarely give rise to investigatory stops, and even less frequently lead to the recovery of gun crime-related evidence during an investigatory stop." So we just don't have data that tells us anything about the effectiveness of these technologies. So we would need info from other cities that have done this testing, I think, before we could possibly vote on this. I'm most concerned with unnecessary police escalation. If we get a false positive, police may arrive at a scene expecting a live shooter, unnecessarily escalate a situation. escalate a situation and use force. And we need to be moving Vallejo Police in a direction where they're de-escalating and decreasing use of force. This technology might do the opposite if we're not careful. So even though it is a beta test, and even if there's no cost to us now, I wouldn't want to be spending our resources on a system that's unproven or isn't going to serve us. And I'd recommend waiting to see that data and also asking about the long-term cost. I don't think it's wise to test a technology that we can't afford long-term. And the data from Flock says that this will cost approximately $25,000 per square mile. Vallejo has approximately 50 square miles, so that's over $1 million. Are we deploying it throughout the city? Are we just targeting high-crime areas or those high-crime areas, communities of color? There's a lot of questions that still need to be answered. My recommendation for the board would be to either oppose it or hold off until we have that privacy policy and take a vote later. Thank you.
Okay, this concludes all the comments. So Madam Attorney, it looks like this item is only for discussion today? Okay, please.
You can make a motion if you'd like to, or discuss amongst yourselves.
From a discussion perspective, I think I have some concerns that I feel are pretty similar to what Andrea just mentioned. At the very least, I think, my personal opinion, that making any kind of recommendation without being able to have access to the policy would be a mistake, whether we were for or against it. But also, I do, I do feel like I would like to see, prefer to see more information regarding how and where the Raven system would be deployed as a part of the beta test and some understanding of the cost long-term for what the system would look like after the beta test.
I think this is a question for the chief, but if we were to table this adjourned item for the next meeting, is that enough time for you to develop a policy and bring that forward to us?
If you were to table it, then the, the policy could be available by your next meeting. That's, it's a draft policy. But this is a beta test and it's not actionable things that we're going to be acting on as, as a department. It's, it's for the system to learn and for us to participate with, with Flock in this, in this beta test. So I think that our goal in the city of Vallejo is to reduce gun violence. And we have a lot of gun violence. And unfortunately, it's disproportionately impacting communities of color. And if you look at our homicide numbers and you look at many of our victims, then we need to be able to deploy these cameras in the areas where the shootings are happening. And if, if these cameras help to save one life, I think it's worth it. If we can get a response out, because after a shooting happens, our first concern is to get a victim to treatment and to get them to a hospital. That's the first concern. The follow-up on it is, is secondary to protecting our residents. So to your question, could we get you a policy by your next meeting? I believe we could. It'll be a draft policy. But for me, the time is of the essence because we're going into the summer months. And historically, our shootings do rise during the summer. I'd just like to make a comment. I did a little research, not on theirs. I couldn't find any studies on their system, but it was other gunshot systems. On all of them, actual crime rates never changed after deploying gunshot systems.
I'm not sure if I want to do this. Is it possible to make like a negative motion where instead of saying like motion to approve, we say motion to deny?
There's, there's no motion, there's no resolution denying it. So you could make a motion, well, if someone does, I mean, I, I could bring one back next time. But if you decide not to approve this, you could also vote no when it goes around your, you know, you could just put the resolution up for a vote and, and whether we adopt it or not, and you can say no.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on delaying the vote on the resolution until we have a policy in place and how much it will cost out of the beta for the city.
Can I ask that you?
If I may, commission members, just the, the cost factor for whether technology is or is not developed, it's really a decision for the city council. What we're being, what this body's being asked about is a recommendation on the technology itself, not on whether it's, you know, wise or affordable, but whether you can or can't recommend the technology based on, you know, the policy in place. I think relative to the policy, what the chief was trying to state earlier was that the policy would be needed once the cameras or once the technology was actually implemented if we decide to go, and if the city council decides to go forward with implementing the technology. What you're being asked this evening is only really about beta testing it. It's not going to be deployed for use actually, but just to test it so that it has the opportunity to then learn. And then they can make a determination based on the statistics out of that learning curve, if you will, whether the city, the department, and the council are interested in the purchasing of this equipment at all. So yes, you could delay your vote until the policy is brought forward. But as the chief mentioned, the policy would only be in draft form at that point in time because no policy would be implemented unless we determine to go forward with a purchase.
Well, it'd be, at least I'd be more comfortable with a blueprint, just kind of like creating a, a building. You want to have a blueprint of what you're going to be actually creating. And Flock Safety actually has data information already that they don't, that they haven't presented this evening, based on information that they have in beta testing in other cities. So for the, you know, for, for me, I have some concerns that they want to.
So you'd like to see?
So I would like to see.
My apologies.
At least a blueprint of a policy draft.
So I, I guess I'm confused. You want to see the data from their other beta testing to know whether or not we should beta test it? Or you're saying you'd like to see a draft of a policy that may or may not be the policy that comes forward if we decide to purchase it?
Well, my first point was to, to counter your, your point that we would need information on this to see if it's efficient or not. Flock Safety already has that information based on beta testing they've done in other cities. So they could have presented that this evening, based on how efficient it is in other cities. But they haven't presented that. So it's almost like we have to install it with, and create an infrastructure for this in order to create statistics that are already present for them. But on a side, my delay would have to do with drafting a policy so we can see exactly how this would be enforced by the, by the city and the police department.
Okay. So if I understand the desire, then what you're suggesting is that you'd like to make a motion to continue the item and ask that some information be brought back from the vendor, as well as to see at least the makings of the draft policy that you will ultimately be asked about, that policy, if we decide to go forward beyond beta.
Correct.
Okay. That is an appropriate motion. You certainly may make that motion.
Motion's on the floor. Go ahead, if you have a second.
Second?
Okay, I'll do a voice. Madam Attorney, are we good with the voice call? Board Member Bellboena?
Yes, to delay?
Yes, yes, yes. The motion is to delay the policy and come back to you with data and the draft policy. Board Member Briganser?
Yes.
And Board Member McMillan?
No.
Board Member Chen?
Abstain.
Board Member Riddell?
Yes.
Board Member Yen?
Yes.
The motion passes with four yays and one abstention and one nay. So we're delaying this, this discussion, bringing it back to the board with more data and draft policy. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. This concludes this item. We'll move on to the report of the chair and the board members. So we have no chair and no vice chair. So we'll go ahead and give you the opportunity, if you have any reports, to share. We'll start with you at the top, or if anybody wants to jump in, that's fine, too.
So I can create an agenda item for our next meeting?
That's coming up next.
Okay.
If you have any activity to report to the, to the public or to the, to your board members, this is your opportunity right now to do so. If there's none, we can move on to the next item. All right. Okay, so the future agenda items that we have so far, this is from, from the last meeting, some of the items here as well. We're, on the next meeting, which is going to be scheduled on June 29th, we are bringing back a Brown Act, Public Act training for you guys. And that's going to be on the 29th. That's pretty long. It's at least about hour and a half of training. So we don't want to pack the agenda, obviously, for the next meeting. But anyway, that meeting needs to be conducted and that meeting is going to happen on the next meeting. I'm sorry, that, that training will happen in the next meeting. And you've also requested in your first meeting to invite a representative from the police department to provide an update on new technology and policies. And we will definitely work on getting that out to you. And list of current deployed technologies, cost, length of deployments, and impact of technologies, drone policy, and new proposed police department surveillance item data and analysis. And now we're going to have this item that we're delaying today that will be added to the agenda for the future as well. And Board Member Bellboena, you had an item that you wanted to add?
Correct. I'd like to agendize being able to propose meeting monthly.
Okay, yes. Okay, so we'll.
And don't forget the vice chair and chair election.
That's right, oh, that's right, yes. So, okay, so in addition to, I'm not sure how we want to pack all, we'll, I'll discuss with, with attorney and, and the appropriate bodies here first. But yes, I've got this noted down and, okay, anything else?
Yeah, I would like to request, in conjunction with our rediscussion of the gunshot sound detection, a report on Flock's effectiveness for false and negative, false positives and false negatives of gunshot detections. And I would also like to request, as a part of a report, policy or policies regarding Flock employees' ability to access our data, both ALPR and gunshot sound detection. I know that the representative had mentioned that there are policy, that that's protected by policy, not technology. So I would like to request that we have the ability to, to see what those policies are.
Okay.
Wait, when you want something on a future agenda, you have to vote on it. So there has to be a majority. So if, for these agenda items.
I mean, we won't be able.
And it has to be.
Yes, go ahead, Veronica, I'm sorry.
So you can agendize the request to agendize something and then it gets voted on? Does that make sense?
Okay, well, okay, I'll talk to you offline.
Just for clarity, can we vote on those things in this meeting?
No, they're not on the agenda to vote on those things unless.
Okay, so the process would be that the two of us have made requests to add to the agenda for the next time, that those things, like, like for instance, for my reports. And I'm just asking this because I know in our first SAB meeting, we had made a request for reports and we had voted on that request and it had been approved. And then those reports were added to be included in a future agenda item. And it sounds like that process is not what we can follow this time?
No, it's, I think you, well, I wasn't at the first meeting, so my apologies for not knowing the answer to that question. But, so the process is essentially that if a member, yourself or any other member, would like to request an item to be agendized, you can make your request at this point in the agenda. I'd like to ask, you know, I'd like to request that we, my request to agendize something be placed on the agenda. Then the request goes on the agenda, everyone votes on it. If it gets, if it gets a majority vote, then the item goes on the agenda for discussion. So the first step is just a request to agendize. And if it receives majority support, then it actually gets agendized.
And the vote for majority support cannot happen in the same meeting as the request?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is the process under the municipal code.
Okay.
So it's, 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 it is a two, it is a, for lack of a better word, a two-meeting process. Now, the only exception I would say to that is that tonight you pushed an item over and you asked for some, some information. That item was technically on the agenda. So the additional information items that you're asking for that relate to that agenda item, I think are fair game because that item was on the agenda tonight. So that's not, you're not asking for an agenda item per se, you're asking for information for an agenda item already scheduled. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, thank you. I would like to structure it that way. I would like to request the additional data so that hopefully we don't delay all of this by four more months. Thank you.
Exactly.
So does that mean for the future agenda items, we also need to make a vote to add it to the agenda for next meeting? Outside of the Brown Act that's already scheduled?
Correct, and we have a very.
I don't think so because the, some of those items were already scheduled, is my understanding, Navid. The, the Brown Act training is something we schedule. It's not by staff, it's not by commission request. It's something that we do for all boards and commissions. The items B, C, D, and E, I don't know, were those already on as an agenda request, Navid?
They were requested in their first board meeting on the April 21st.
And did they receive majority support to add them to an, a future agenda item?
You know, I, I don't think we, we did, okay.
Yes, actually, it's been a few months, literally, but I think we did vote, we may have voted one time for all of them, but it was majority.
That is correct, that is, yeah, they did, they, they, they pretty much threw out a list and then we voted on that list to be addressed in the future.
Okay. Not exactly perfect as policy goes, but I think, you know, as we start out here, I don't think we can expect exactly perfect. So it sounds like these items have already received majority support to be on a future agenda. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, they did.
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Then I think that answers the question that was raised as to whether or not they need to be, they, they will be added as time and staff is available to, to work up staff reports, et cetera, for those items.
I wanted to amend, I think this was mentioned at the last meeting, but I, it didn't get transcribed here onto the future agenda items. But on part C, where it says list of current deployed technologies, all that stuff, I want to make sure location, like a map is included in there? I believe we did mention and vote on that last time, but I don't see it written here.
I can make that amendment, that's not a problem.
So wait, 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 hold up. I, I think that's something that the department will need to weigh in on. And I don't know if the chief or DC Taw is still here, because I'm on a cell phone, I can't see that. But to the extent that the location of certain technologies would affect their efficacy, I don't think that we would necessarily be bringing forward, A, this camera is located in this location, as a for instance. Because certainly if we start outing where cameras are all located, that may not be as obvious to the public as you may hope they would be. They may not be as useful if. be, they may not be as useful if, I'll, I'll use an example. We have cameras that we use for, that have been deployed for a long period of time that are addressed to dumping and, and capturing people who are illegally dumping within the city. But obviously, if we say where those cameras are, it may be that they'll just move to a different location to dump, and then we have to move the camera to that, to other locations to capture those. So, you know, a lot of our technology is not static, it isn't located in a specific place of time, always at the same place, sometimes they move around. So I think in terms of the request, to the extent that we can bring you that information and not affect the efficacy of the technology, we can do that, but, and we can explain, I think the department can explain, in the event that they're not bringing you information that you have requested, why not?
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
So at this point, in addition to what you're seeing on the screen, I have a request, and a majority, we're going to take a vote in a minute, we have a request for the future agenda items to, for the frequency of the meetings, that's one item. We're going to carry over the item 10C, that, that's going to be carried over to the next meeting, and we still have an election, election of Chair and the Vice Chair.
The frequency of the agenda items, or the frequency of the meetings, will need to go on first as a request to agendize it in the future. If that receives majority support, then it will come back as an agenda item to make a request that will take an ordinance amendment and would have to be approved by the City Because right now, the ordinance actually states what the meeting dates are and the frequency.
Okay.
So I just wanted to be clear, that'll take several meetings to accomplish in the event that the Council supports the more frequent meetings.
Okay. So should we do a voice call, a voice roll for the, for the future agenda items, Madam Secretary, at this point, or we're good?
No, you're good. You, you voted for the future agenda items that are up here, anything else will come back as an, as a request to agendize.
Perfect, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, so this concludes this item, and I think we're standing adjourned. Do we need a motion to adjourn, or we're good? Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Second that.
Well, thank you.
I'll make the motion to adjourn first.
Second.
Okay. Aye, everybody aye? Okay.
Aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation.